We have to wait until it's officially 9:30 before we can start the meeting, so. So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. If the clerk could take the roll, please?
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Here.
Commissioner Severajah.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Gomash.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
First items is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next item is review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Then we have the approval of the minutes from our July 16th County Board Meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Look. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Present.
Motion carries. Okay, and one present. Okay, we have one item today under Chair's remarks. And as Library Board Liaison, I'd like to ask Commissioner Brassad to lead our recognition today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's such a pleasure to look out and see so many volunteers in our audience this morning. It's proven that children often slide backwards in their educational progress during the summer months. But keeping kids in our libraries is important to stopping that slide. And in fact, keeping them learning while they're having fun. Our Volantene program is essential in this effort. Assistant Library Director Maggie Snow is here to recognize the teens who have been so helpful to our summer reading program. Maggie?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Maggie Snow, the Assistant Director at the library. And it is my pleasure today to be here to recognize the good work of the citizens of Anoka County who volunteer for the library over the summer and throughout the year. In 2014, volunteers donated over 5,500 hours. And this year, we've seen a 12% increase in just the first six months. So we've got a very active community that supports the library. They share their passion for knowledge by helping us get materials onto the shelves and into the hands of readers more quickly. They create displays of their own collections and their own hobbies to pique curiosity. Some of those displays have included model airplanes and Legos and knitting and quilts. And all of those lead people back to the collections. They assist with teaching computer and technology skills. They help build literacy skills by working in our play spots and helping with our summer reading program. They build leadership skills by helping support our Project Bookshelf, which is a library book drive to give books to the food shelves during the holiday time. One of the volunteers that helped with that said, "Reading benefits the community because the more people read, the better they understand themselves and each other." One Girl Scout troop earned their Silver Award by working with the library. That required 50 hours of volunteers from each of the girls in the troop. They helped plan and implement programs for kids at the library, which included a life-size Candy Land game. The troop leader said, "The opportunity to work with the library provided the girls to make connections to the community and possibly even future Girl Scouts." Volunteers are essential to the library and the library staff appreciate the energy and the creativity that the volunteers have brought to the library. I wanted to take a minute here to read a poem that was written for the Friends. The Friends of the Library are unique volunteers and a couple of them are in the audience today. They donate their time and energy into raising funds for special projects for the library. And in the past year, they have hosted two very successful mini golf tournaments at the Rum River Library and have donated more than $7,000 in the last two years for Book Club in a Bag. And all of the giveaway books that we have over the summer have been purchased by the Friends. So this was a poem written by local poet Molly Van Avery, "To the Friends." Books, what are they? Literally pages bound together, front and back cover. But my friends, let us look deeper. This is our task, to support the heart of why they matter. Words across a page string together to tell a story. And story is what we are made of, our cultural DNA, our collective memory, our introduction to empathy. We covet their power, believe it should be free. We open the doors so others can turn the page, the whole mind, body, heart engaged. So I thank you to all of our volunteers today. I thank you for this time to recognize them.
Maggie.
I know that earlier we took some pictures, but could we have, first of all, all of the volunteers just stand up so that everybody can see who you are? Thank you for your work. Thank you so much. It is so encouraging to see people at such a young age volunteering and giving back to their community. So we hope that that is something that you will continue for a lifetime and we really appreciate your leadership. And then the adults who are volunteering, could you stand up? We want to recognize you as well. And again, thank you so much. Without the volunteers within not only our library system, but in all the various programs throughout Anoka County, we would not be able to provide the services that we do. So you really are critical to the infrastructure of the services we provide in the community. So again, thank you so much for your dedication and your commitment to giving back to the community. We appreciate it. Okay, now we will move on to our committee reports. And we'll begin with Management Committee Report. Commissioner West.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The items on the regular agenda are informational, but we have an extra item under that.
Is to consider adopting Resolution 2015 M6, authorizing the execution of grant agreements with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Office of Justice Programs.
And is there an offer of the resolution?
I'm moved.
Okay, resolution's been offered by Commissioner Brassad. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Now we'll move on to Transportation Committee Chair Report. Commissioner Schulte.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two items for your consideration. First, I would recommend, actually, the Chair of the Committee, myself, recommends approval to enter into a memorandum of agreement with Anoka County HRA for replacement of neighborhood stabilization program property related to the reconstruction of Foley Boulevard in the city of Coonawhupis and authorizing the Chair of the County Board and the County Administrator to execute said agreement, subject to review by the County Attorney as to form and legality. If I can just expand for a moment on that, this is simply an NSP property that we had acquired that is in a reconstruction zone for Foley Boulevard. And it becomes cumbersome if we choose to relocate that property. So the idea at this point is to deem another property an NSP property. Take this one off the NSP rolls so we can acquire this land for the reconstruction of Foley Boulevard.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded by Commissioner Schulte. And further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Our next item is one that was tabled at our July 16th County Board Meeting. On July 6th, the Committee recommended approval to award a contract to the lowest responsible bidder for Anoka County reflective striping projects on Viking Boulevard, Crosstown Boulevard, and Bunker Lake Boulevard in the cities of East Bethel, Oak Grove, Now Then, Andover, and Ham Lake. And based on the bids received on July 14th, the recommendation for awards to Century Fence Company in the amount of $230,215.59.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Finance Committee Report. Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, thank you. We met on July 21st and we came away with two action items. The first action item is the Committee recommends the County Board approve Contract C-004334 with Granny's Closet of Anoka County for conducting services at the Rum River Campus. Granny's Closet has had quite a long history with Anoka County. And they, of course, provide services to seniors and the ways of collecting things that seniors might need. They, just pulling it up here, some of the products are on there, hygiene products and clothes and that sort of thing. And they're looking to expand in an area that we have some available space. And this is a license agreement that covers that expansion.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
There a second? Okay, seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The next item is the Committee recommends the County Board approve Contract C-004379 to Allied Blacktop out of Maple Grove for the completion of the 2015 Chip Seal Project in an amount not to exceed $66,230. This is covering the Rum River Campus Cottage Number Two Parking Lot, Anoka County Sheriff's Office, and completion of the Lionel Lakes Parking Lot. And this is part of our continuing, ongoing maintenance program of parking lots, extending their life.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair, the rest of the items are informational purposes only.
Okay, now we'll move on to Human Services. And we have one item on the consent agenda. And I will move approval of that item. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Community Corrections, consider recommending the County Board accept new funding from the Minnesota Department of Corrections in an amount of $52,000 to fund an additional probation officer in order to supervise some of those high-risk offenders who are released from prison. And so this was kind of a nice surprise out of the legislative session to receive this additional funding. So appreciative of that. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is to consider recommending the County Board enter into Contract C-0004354 with Keystone Interpreting Solutions in an amount of up to $25,000 for sign language interpretation from June 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2016. The previous vendor is no longer providing those services and so we needed to identify someone else we could. And I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just so I, this is for a year and a half, is that right? $25,000 for 18 months?
Yes, up to, so not to exceed.
Not to exceed, thank you.
Okay, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Social Services, consider recommending the County Board authorize a contract option for developmental disability and waiver case management services and reassign current developmental disability and waiver case management staff to min choices assessor positions and address the waiver case management growth. So you'll be hearing more about this at our next meeting. I know those of you who are in management heard a little bit about it. If you recall, in the past, we approved additional positions because of the federal and state requirements around min choices. We cannot contract out the assessment piece. County staff have to do the assessment piece. And so in order to accommodate some of that, we are going to look at contracting out some of our cases, as we've done in the past, and continue to have cases out there with private providers. But it will continue to be under the supervision and monitoring of our staff. So again, just one of those mandates and this is the way that we're accommodating some of those shifts.
I'll move it, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Job Training Center, we have a number of items. The first is to consider recommending the County Board submit a competitive grant application to the Minnesota Job Skills Partnership Board for the Low Income Worker Training Program in an amount up to $154,000 to serve 40 slots over the course of two years. And then the next item is to consider recommending the County Board authorize the 2015 Senior Community Service Employment Program sponsorship agreement between Senior Services of America and the Anoka County Job Training Center in an amount of $222,315 from July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016. It allows low-income senior citizens to continue in the workforce and providing needed services in various agencies. And helps to keep them maybe off of assistance when, if there was no other options for them, that's where they may end up. So that's what that provides. The next item is to consider recommending the County Board submit the 2016 Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program Employment Training Plan to the Department of Employment and Economic Development to provide employment services from October 1st, 2015 through September 30th, 2016. So I will move items five, six, and seven under Job Training Center. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then the final item for Human Services is Resolution 2015 HS17, paying the economic assistance bills. And I'll offer that resolution. And it's roll call vote.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. That concludes my report. Now we'll move on to Intergovernmental Community Relations Committee Chair Report. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The majority of the items on the agenda today happen to be with our Medical Examiner's Office. The first one is that I would recommend that the County Board approve a new contract with Bowman Family Funeral Home for Medical Examiner Transporter Services in the northern half of St. Louis County in the amount of $750 per run. The initial term of the contract is July 1st through December 31st, 2015, and will renew for 2016.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
I would recommend that the County Board approve the following under a new contract, C-004373, with St. Louis County for medical examiner services. Initial contract of July 1st through December 31st, 2015, at a rate of $2.50 per capita, with automatic renewal in 2016 at the same rate. B is a new staff person located in Duluth to coordinate staffing. And C is an increase in the hours of current investigator prosecutor position from .08 to 1.0.
Is there a motion to approve items 2, A, B, and C?
I'm moved.
Okay, so it's been moved by Commissioner Brassad, second by Commissioner Gomash. Further discussion?
Madam Chair, we're pretty excited about this contract. I know it came up quick in our Medical Examiner's Office. Had to work very fast and diligently to put everything together. So we're excited to be at this point approving the contract today.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
I would recommend that the County Board approve a new contract with Chippewa County for the medical examiner services at an amount of $2,000 per case plus a monthly administrative fee of $125. The term is from August 1st, 2015, through December 31st, 2016.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
I would recommend that the County Board renew the following contracts for medical examiner services with terms expiring December 31st, 2018, unless specifically noted. First is contract with Sherburne County. Second is with Renville County, then Pine County, Benton County, Carver County, and then the contract with Douglas County, Wisconsin, for 2016. May be renewed for two additional years upon written agreement of both parties. And then the final renewal is with Burnett County, Wisconsin, with a term expiration of December 31st, 2017.
Is there a motion to approve items 4, A through G?
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Look, second by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The final item is that the County Board, I would recommend that the County Board enter into a cooperative funding agreement with the Fair Housing Implementation Council from July 1st, 2015, through June 30th, 2020.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair, can we just get a description of this?
Karen?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the Fair Housing Implementation Council is a group of 13 entitlement jurisdictions that receive federal funding through HUD. We are required by law to do an analysis of impediments to fair housing and to also follow the laws related to civil rights. The easiest way to do this is to work together and everybody funds the programs and then we do things like paired testing. We rewrite the analysis of impediments. We do all kinds of activities to further promote fair housing and that's why we're working together as a large group so no one agency has to shoulder the financial burden of all these activities.
So Karen, just a question related to that. So each jurisdiction may have different barriers. So how do you ensure that some of the issues that may exist in other communities don't automatically get applied to our community unnecessarily?
Madam Chair, that is an excellent question, one that we asked some experts at HUD recently. We were seriously considering going off on our own to do our own analysis of impediments so it would only talk about Anoka County. We had the Division Director of Fair Housing on the phone and he cautioned us to make sure that even if we go alone, that we look at our region as a whole. And if there's an impediment in our region, we still have to identify it because fair housing moves across borders very quickly. The biggest example right now is segregation. Our current plans across the metro did not address segregation. But there have been several lawsuits out on the East Coast and down in the South that have, the counties and other entitlement jurisdictions lawsuits out on the East Coast and down in the South that have, the counties and other entitlement jurisdictions have had to put out very large settlements because their analysis of impediments did not talk about segregation. So we have all received explicit direction from HUD to make sure our plans talk about it, to determine how it can be addressed even if it isn't in our community today. So we are being advised to continue to work as a region. We will each break out our own section and talk about impediments in our community, but our large overreaching plan will talk about ways to address things like segregation as a whole.
Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, I'm assuming this must have to do with dollars we see, we receive from the federal government and somehow distribute. You know, from a city standpoint, their comprehensive plan should account for different types of housing which would, I'm assuming would address, you know, the fairness aspect of it. I'm struggling to see how from a county standpoint, which we really don't deal with planning and zoning necessarily, aside from Lynwood Township perhaps, and that I don't know that we've done recently.
1965, I think.
Yeah.
The law changed.
That, that how this necessarily applies to us, I understand it's a federal requirement, but to what extent do we, I guess, find value in the dollars we receive and the reporting required and I guess on the balance sheet in the end, is there any gain? Is the question I have.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Look, I'm sure that it's a very intangible benefit gained, but what we have done is improved fair housing opportunity across our region. While many of our activities aren't related to the types of housing built, that's a city's responsibility. We have an obligation to make sure that the federal laws are being followed. That's why we hire a company to go out and do paired testing where they go to an apartment to make sure that they are treated equally, to make sure that the landlords are understanding the fair housing laws. We take a look at our own buildings. I think I've had testers come out to my senior housing buildings and make sure that we are doing the right thing. We also have an obligation to make sure that we are promoting fair housing during Fair Housing Month, making sure that we talk with landlords, talk with city councils. It's a very broad overarching set of goals that we have to follow in order to further fair housing and try to make things better in the future. All of our funding is tied to doing this. If we don't do an analysis and if we don't further fair housing, we lose millions of dollars.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
How do you know if it's fair or not fair? It can't be just by the population that lives in a place because people choose to live where they do.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, when we do an analysis of impediments, we do a lot of community outreach. We engaged a firm to help us write the analysis of impediments. They conducted meetings across the metro area. We are now going back and having more work done on community engagement to make sure that we're really hearing from the people living in the communities, asking questions about, do you feel you've been treated fairly? What problems have you experienced? Do you feel that you are trapped in this particular neighborhood for reasons other than choice? While we can't fix all of that, we are required to identify what potential problems are there. And then as we go through our action plan each year, we identify half a dozen small action steps that we can take to try to make a difference and change the way these perceptions are out there in the communities.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair, I think it's important to note that if Anoka County went at it alone, our workload would increase and we'd be responsible for the whole cost of ensuring that we're meeting the law.
Madam Chair, trustees, as an example, for our recent review of the analysis of impediments, we paid $58,000 to have that document rewritten. The county, Anoka County's portion was $3,000. So really it is Minneapolis, St. Paul, Hennepin County, Ramsey County that are carrying the bulk of the financial responsibility. But we, rather than taking it on ourselves and having that full cost, we believe that does make sense to enter into a cooperative funding agreement.
Further discussion? I think it's something that we want to make sure that we monitor carefully to make sure that the needs within our communities really are the ones that are focused, at least for our area within the plan. And so that all of a sudden, there aren't issues that aren't issues here that suddenly are identified and maybe misleading.
Absolutely.
Let's make sure we monitor that pretty closely. Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
With that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to Property Records and Taxation Committee Report. Commissioner Cordiak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At our last Property Records and Taxation Committee meeting, we took up two items that required the board's consideration. Neither of them have we seen for a while. First one has got to do with two resolutions that we are, we will entertain promoting today. They had to do with the opportunity to handle, dispose of, or whatever, but I think it's 26 non-buildable, tax-forfeited, forfeited property that are landlocked properties throughout Anoka County. These are little slivers of land here and there between two parcels adjoining two or three, whatever, that we pick up over time. They occur because of platting errors, they occur because of legal description discrepancies, they occur because they've been abandoned. Somehow they never seem to end, but we always seem to pick up pieces here and there. They don't accumulate at a great rate. I think we haven't done this for about two to four years right now, I think was probably the last sale. Cam was going to comment. It's been a number of years. We do, for what it's worth, have several parties who are interested. I think the majority of these parcels have adjoining neighbor who might have an interest in these parcels, so we hope to get them into the marketplace and provide the opportunity to dispose of these properties for obviously we can hold them sometimes for years. The first resolution here is regarding a proposal to, let's see, we are first of all setting the parameters for sale of these properties in Resolution 2015 PRT-4, where we're authorizing the sale of these non-buildable parcels. The second resolution which follows has to do with the allocation or distribution of the funds that were gathered through the process of the sale of these properties, which as I recall is shared with local jurisdictions, Anoka County, 20% in the parks fund, internal cost allocations, however that breaks out, under statute and practice. I will comment that in our discussion, we, I think we set these parcels at a fair and very reasonable rate. I think are interested to get them back into the marketplace rather than hold them for any length of time, for if you don't do that, they could link it for a long time. Madam Chair, I'd like to introduce the first of those two resolutions, which is Resolution 2015 PRT-4, authorizing the sale of these 26 parcels. I'll offer.
Commissioner Cordiak, do you want to offer PRT-4 and 5 together?
Fine, they are connected and I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, so the two resolutions have been offered. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner West.
I just so happened to be reading an article about adverse possession last night. I have a son who just purchased property where it's a very large portion was occupied by the seller of the house he bought. And he didn't discover until after closing, you know, that, that land was not his. But in adverse possession, and the laws are, this was a general article, I don't know what our laws are, but if somebody has been using those little slivers of parcel as part of their lawn, they've been mowing it for 20 years or whatever, our laws say, do we ever have that situation arise?
We will refer that to our county attorney, Tony Palumbo.
Madam Chair, as Commissioner, I'm not sure how long a lecture you want on adverse possession.
No.
In Minnesota, it's 15 years. And it is only on abstract properties, not on registered property. And then secondly, in order to perfect your interests after adverse possession, you almost have to bring what's called a quiet title action to establish. And then people can oppose that. And there's various conditions that you have to fulfill in order to possess property by adverse possession. The genesis of that concept goes back to when the state was founded, they felt that people used the property best should own it and after 15 years. So that's the basis for it. But it can be very tricky. You cannot adversely possess against public property, by the way.
Yeah, public property.
Everyone's aware of that. So people are crossing over our trails and our roads, et cetera, you can't do that. But it is, it's an interesting concept, there still is much litigation involved in this area. And Sons would be a classic example of why there's such litigation. But here in this particular case, I'm sure that there has been some sort of dispute over the property or the boundary lines, et cetera, and that. And this is the classic reasons why cities wind to have to approve lot splits, so we do not have things like this where people choose, they don't like the land so they're not going to pay taxes on it, so they split it off from their property. And that's why we restrict, and cities generally do that, the county has noted, and we haven't done that, you know, since I think Lyndon Johnson's term, but other than that. So adverse possession is still an active concept and is still very much a litigated concept, but something like this may address some of those concerns by having a private sale. Usually it's somebody whose property is adjoining and wants to at least expand theirs. And then it will be joined together on a property tax statement, so it's back on the tax rolls as stated earlier.
But Madam Chair, public.
Properties or.
Doesn't have any.
You cannot adversely possess against public property, nor can you against torns property.
Yes.
Okay. So in fact, when there are disputes, sometimes you register your property in the torns systems just to get rid of claims of adverse possession. And it comes up many times, especially in rural parts of our county where people have crossed over property continuously for 15 years, then you have what's called a prescriptive easement. And that, of course, provides for litigation also, so.
Thank you. And Commissioner Look, I think was next.
Madam Chair, thank you. We had a robust discussion on this, I think, in the committee. My concern, and I think it's been priced relatively inexpensively, so there's incentive for people to possibly purchase this land, but as I understand, this is tax-forfeited land in some instances.
All.
All of it?
All.
And as tax-forfeited land, we are agents of the state in administering this process. Do we have, and this might be another question for Attorney Palumbo, do we have any liability as it relates to these slivers of land? Accident occurs? Do we have liability as a county to have to now defend ourselves? Or is that liability of the state have to defend itself?
Madam Chair, Madam Commissioner, it's a very good question. Generally, unless we take actual possession and improve the property, we would not have liability. The state, if there is any, would have that liability. We are just holding it in trust on behalf of either school districts or the state of Minnesota on this tax forfeiture.
Thank you. Commissioner Cordiak?
I just want to comment, and Commissioner West's question was an interesting one. In our case, it kind of works in our advantage. These parcels are publicly held, so you're not going to find adverse possession. But the good news is people, and sometimes these parcels have their fence lines, garages, swimming pools, playgrounds, swing sets, and so they're many times anxious to acquire those parcels and make sure they don't have to move the swing. So it does go, that does certainly happen, that there's encroachment. And we've seen the highway department, we've seen the parks system, it's an ongoing problem, but this works well for us.
Madam Chair, and then when we do, if I can say just a little bit more, when we do find those situations, we have many times, we enter into what's called a license agreement with people where they absorb the liability. A license agreement as opposed to an easement, a license agreement is personal to that particular individual. When that person leaves the property, then that license expires as opposed to an easement which stays with the property from owner to owner. So we have run into this, particularly in parks department, I'm sure in highway department, where we enter into license agreements. So if you see that on board agendas and members of the public, that's the basis for it, is we want to accommodate somebody who has used it, but on the other hand, we don't want the liability and that sunsets when they leave the property.
Okay, thank you. Good information. Okay, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The second item is one that we haven't looked at for 10 years. We're looking at the abatement policy that I actually look at often as I review the abatement activities in this county and you see them at each county board meeting. One of the things that we have at the county board, many of those abatement actions, we will handle as a consent item and they're very straightforward and they are what they are, they've had a broad examination. One of the areas that we do vote on, however, is disaster situations like damage by fire. It's the most common thing, where homes are destroyed by fire or damaged by fire, and we handle them as an action item. I think that this item here does kind of amend that, to bring it into the consent item, we've never turned away a damage by fire to a home or homestead in Anoka County. We'd like to simply handle it in the same process that we do the abatements. And secondarily, we had a process where when the commissioner had a concern about abatement, we would call together any three commissioners and consider their concern. Well, now that we have our real estate committee, the point is that we kind of restructured that statement so that the three real estate committee commissioners might tend to serve first and only find another commissioner when we step outside of that circle of three commissioners. So that's what these two items state in the restatement of the abatement policy dated effectively July 28th of 15. If we approve it, I will move it, Madam Chair.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? I just want to say thank you for looking at that. It's a great streamlining of a process that has just kind of been done a certain way forever. And so, thank you, I appreciate that. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
And then the next item is consider approving liquor license application as reviewed by and consented to by the township sheriff and attorney, and it's for the Stacy Lyons Club, one day on sale, 3.2 malt liquor license for the township of Lynwood, September 12th during their Lynwood Family Fun Days. They have kind of a fireman's dance. And the reason that it's being brought here is because we are responsible for this action for townships and this is the one remaining township in Anoka County. So I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And then before we adjourn, just want to remind the public that if you're looking for some activity in Anoka County, this week is the 3M Golf Championship. And the actual pro-am begins on Wednesday at 7:00 a.m. That will be Wednesday and Thursday. The first round of championship play begins on Friday, the 31st, at 10:30 a.m. And there's going to be many greats of golf that will be there. And so encourage members of the public to go out and enjoy some of the activities out there. Friday through Sunday, there's a family fun zone, so there's activities for the kids as well. There's a Pioneer Press Expo tent which has all sorts of activities in there as well. I know they have autographs that will be taking place on Saturday, so, and it is free to the public. So great opportunity right in our backyard and encourage you to check it out. And now I'll turn it over to Commissioner West.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also am very involved in activity this weekend on August 1st. It is called Convoy of Hope. It is, an organization comes in and incorporates the program with a local church and it is very faith-based, but there are 40 vendors for community services. Health services will be provided, health screening, breast cancer screening. There is fun activities for children. The visitor, we expect 10,000 people to come and it's for people who are in poverty and are down on their luck now and just finding answers to help them improve their lives. There will be 11 inflatable toys that kids love. There's food. Every mother and, or every woman and child that comes will be given a new pair of shoes. There are family portraits. And each guest is called a guest of honor. It is a wonderful thing and if you know somebody that is looking for help in different areas of their life, please let them know. August 1st is at Spring Lake Park, it's high school athletic fields. And it opens at 10:00 a.m. and the gates close about 3:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon.
Thank you very much. Additional items? If not, meetings adjourned.